Are you ready, Terry?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting to order with a short prayer and a salute to our flag. Almighty God, grant us the wisdom to make those decisions that are in the best interest of all of our residents. May the Heavenly Father of us all bless those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service to our nation, and may He watch over and protect our service men and women now guarding the gates of freedom. Salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Statement of publication.
Take notice that this regular meeting of the mayor and council being held on this 22nd...
Stand on, Jessica.
22nd day of February 2016 has been advertised and posted in accordance with Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975.
Roll call.
Councilpersons Buchanan...
Here.
Grillo...
Here.
Kilpatrick...
Here.
Lenbo...
Yeah.
Novak...
Yeah.
Rittenhouse...
Here.
Okay. Approval of prior minutes of the mayor and council, council president.
May I move the following minutes be approved, subject to correction if necessary. January 12, 2016, receipt of bits. January 25, 2016, regular agenda and executive session meetings.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Terry, the proclamation for the Red Cross.
Councilpersons Buchanan...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Grillo...
Yes.
Kilpatrick...
Yes.
Lenbo...
Yes.
Novak...
Yes.
Rittenhouse...
Yes.
May we have the following proclamation to be read into record tonight. Proclamation, Red Cross Month 2016. In the Borough of Serval, we have a long history of helping our neighbors in need. The American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our everyday heroes, those selfless Red Cross volunteers and donors who give their time and resource to help our community members. Those heroes help families find shelter after a home fire. They give blood to help trauma victims and cancer patients. They deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital. They use life-saving skills to save someone from a heart attack, drowning, or choking. They enable children around the globe to be vaccinated from measles and rubella. The American Red Cross depend on local heroes to deliver help and hope during disaster. We applaud those heroes here in the Borough of Serval who give themselves to assist their neighbors when they need a helping hand. Across the country and around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. In fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and the necessities to those affected. It collects 40 percent of the nation's blood supply, provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, teaches millions of life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR, and through its Restoring Family Links program, connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, and migration. We dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, I, Kennedy O'Brien, Mayor of the Borough of Serval, do hereby, by virtue and the authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the Borough of Serval and the State of New Jersey, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2016 as American Red Cross Month, and I encourage all Americans to support this organization and its noble humanitarian mission.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we're going to go into a quick closed session. We have the planning board attorney here and the borough planner, and we needed to go over something. So with attorneys, the clock is ticking like a cab, so we want to make it a short ride.
Whereas this public body is of the opinion that such and such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and the borough council of the Borough of Serval, County, and Millfisk, State, and New Jersey, the public portion of this here meeting is hereby adjourned in order that the governing body may meet in a closed private session for approximately 15 minutes to discuss the following matters: litigation, contract negotiations. Following conclusion of said closed session, the governing body shall reconvene the open portion of this public meeting, consider any other matters which may be properly brought before it at this time. The nature and content of discussion which occurs in closed session shall be made public at such time as the need for nondisclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Will the resolution be approved?
Say it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
Hi, Larry.
How are you?
I'm fine, how are you?
Good, good.
Straightening everything after us, Larry.
I hope so. I hope so. To meet the charge.
Ah.
Thank you.
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 When you're ready, Terry.
We're ready, Mayor.
Make a motion to agree convening.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next order of business. I need to read this into the record. Uh, dated February tenth, two thousand and sixteen. Ordinances were presented to me for signature on February ninth, two thousand and sixteen. For the record, I am returning and vetoing ordinance number three-two-one-dish-one-six, amending the rules of order of the council in so much as it is contrary to every rule of order for every governing body of the state of New Jersey, and there is no practical reason in adopting same. So therefore, on this tenth day of February, two thousand and sixteen, I am vetoing ordinance three-two-one-dish-one-six. Okay, next.
Mayor, at this time, I-I make a motion to override the veto.
Second.
Is there comments? Roll call.
Yes, no comment, Mayor.
Okay.
Um, again, this ordinance, we're taking out the phrase, but may be withdrawn or amended by the mover at any time before discussion, which means that it comes up, you can't withdraw, in my opinion, you can't withdraw the, uh, ordinance or the motion. And also, just a clarification, I had mentioned, this came about because I voted no on a, uh, ordinance that I introduced, which I am allowed to under Robert's Rules of Order, and under further, uh, examination, page fifty of our Rules of Order also indicates that I'm allowed to do that, and the attorney did not know that.
Okay, are there any other comments? Roll call.
Yes, Mayor, over-the-years, if you read our Rules of Order, they are amended quite often. This is just an amendment to the Rules of Order. It's just so that we have a little bit more clarity, uh, Art, before a vote is taken, we have discussion, you could withdraw it at that time, before the vote, we're just saying, you know, that the first person to vote on it should be the person that brought it up. It doesn't, no skin off anybody's nose, it's just to make everything a little bit more above board. Thank you.
Mary, you withdrew that part of where you could withdraw it, you withdrew that from the motion, read it, right there.
Before discussion, Art.
You can always withdraw it. You just try, you can withdraw it with, before, you can always withdraw it before the vote.
Giving us the opportunity, everyone, the opportunity.
Once a vote starts being taken, you can never withdraw it, Art.
Okay, are there any other, are there any other comments? No other comments, roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
No.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
No.
Okay, um, I'm gonna, oh, you know, I never opened up, was there a public hearing on that, Mike?
Um, yeah, before, it's, right now, it's just the old business.
Okay.
There was no public hearing necessary on that portion, there.
Okay, uh, next ordinance, Terry. I'm gonna, uh, open the public hearing for any comments on ordinance three-twenty-two-dish-sixteen. Are there any comments?
Jessica's gonna read it into record.
Ordinance number three-twenty-two-dash-sixteen, an ordinance appropriating one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for various improvements to the sanitary sewer system for and by the borough of Saraval, county of Middlesex, New Jersey.
Are there any comments? Questions? Entertainer motion?
I move that the public hearing be closed, the ordinance be adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Next ordinance.
Public hearing on.
Public hearing on ordinance number three-twenty-three-dash-sixteen, an ordinance supplementing and amending chapter thirteen of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraval to amend section thirteen dash seven point three.
This is on the clothing bins that we have around the, uh, the borough. Uh, are there any questions or comments on this? Being no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Next item.
Ordinance number three-twenty-four-dash-sixteen, an ordinance supplementing and amending chapter two of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraval, section two dash thirty-three point six.
This is, uh, amending where the green, it-it's a housekeeping ordinance about the green team, where it's located in our ordinances. Are there any questions or comments? Barbara, come on up.
Barbara Kilcummings, twenty-two Schmid Street. I believe I'm amiss, I should've commented about three-twenty-three-sixteen. Since I was very vocal, usually I'm critical, but I have to give the council and the mayor credit for creating an ordinance on these clothing bids. If you recall, I was extremely critical because they were placed anywhere, especially on Main Street, and people were dumping what they wanted to there. So I'm glad that the council did take action on this, and apparently, I don't know, when I was reading three-twenty-four, it says delete clothing bins, so, and that's not part of...
Yeah, no.
It's housekeeping.
Section three-twenty, the other one. Okay, but anyway, I want to thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Barb.
Because our town is a mess to begin with, we don't need any more.
Right. Are there any other questions or comments on this ordinance? Being no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed, the ordinance adopted on second and final reading and advertised according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Under new business?
Introduction to the following ordinance, ordinance number three-twenty-five-dash-sixteen, an ordinance amending chapter two, administration subsection two dash forty-one, human relations commission of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraval.
Mayor, I move the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, and a public hearing to be held on March fourteenth, prevailing time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Novak?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Next item.
Introduction of ordinance number three-twenty-six-dash-sixteen, an ordinance amending chapter two, administration to amend subsection two dash forty-nine, information technology advisory commission of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Saraval.
Councilwoman Novak?
I move the ordinance be approved on first reading, advertised according to law, second, public hearing to be held on March fourteenth, prevailing time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Novak?
Yes.
Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Okay, uh, this time, I'm gonna open the public portion section of the consent agenda item, are there any questions? Barbara?
I feel like I'm a one-man band.
Don't stop.
Three, twenty-sixteen fifty-nine. I think that's a little excessive for a fee, just for a feasibility study.
Jay?
Barbara, it's actually a little more than a feasibility study, we're bringing an architect on board to prepare preliminary plans for the building layout. We're gonna have meetings with the public works director, the public works committee, to review the layout of the facility and actually come up with some better plans, so we can get a better idea what the building's gonna cost. So it's a little more than a feasibility study.
Of what the building is gonna cost, and do they have a location for this building?
At this point, there's not a specific location that's been decided upon, there's been a number of sites talked about, but I don't think the council has decided specifically where the building's gonna be located.
I think that one of the reasons why we need to have the architect is because we need to take a look at what size we're actually gonna be dealing with, and that might open up other options for possible land, depending on the size of this building, the dwelling, and what we really need.
Well, before you go ahead and build the Taj Mahal, I would look at other communities, I'd look at the Turnpike, I'd look at the county, I would look at different, I mean, even businesses that have, because I really feel that this public works has run amok, and is costing the taxpayers a lot of money, in spite of what you two ladies seem to think, and how much you promote for public works, that's not what the rest of this community is feeling and thinking, trust me. And, I just think it's gone way out of hand, like Mr. Streck pointed out at the budget meeting, he spent a million dollars, nine-hundred-and-some-thousand dollars on equipment last year, and then we have an auction where I contacted the Department of Community Affairs, and what I did was set up a red flag for Saraval, trust me. I had trouble finding the proper people to speak to, and I spoke to two several people about Saraval, and what they said, it wasn't illegal, but it certainly was not feasible, and it almost bordered unethical, unethical. So, that, I'll save that to the other portion about that, but, believe me, we can't just have a huge Christmas wish list with taxpayers' money. We lost a lot of money with, um, Weber Avenue, MacArthur, the revenue's not coming in, you gave away the store with Highview, so, how much more can you hit these people up for? Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Are there any other questions or comments?
Can I just say one thing? Um, you know, Barbara mentioned having a look around at other municipalities, I just want to say, uh, Jay, um, Dan, Dan, um, just before this meeting started, what did I say I planned on doing on Wednesday, and where was I going to visit?
Go look at Carteret.
I was going to look at actually three different municipalities, um, one of which being Carteret, another being Edison, and another being East Brunswick, so, due diligence is being had to make sure that the facility that we do put out there for the residents is not a quote-unquote Taj Mahal, but really what we need, no, no Christmas wish list, just making sure that we can pick up the garbage and make the town look better, which is one of the complaints that Mrs. Kilcummings has had repeatedly, so, thank you.
Are there any other questions, uh, about the consent agenda? Being no other questions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move the public hearing be closed, and the consent agenda resolutions be approved on roll call vote.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Buchanan?
Yes.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes, with the exception of twenty-sixteen seventy-three. Yeah, just the one.
Councilperson Novak?
Uh, yes.
And Rittenhouse.
Uh, yes, with the exception of twenty-sixteen seventy-one and twenty-sixteen seventy-three will be a no.
At this time, I'm gonna open the public portion for questions or comments on any and all issues, are there any questions or comments? Barbara?
Barbara Kilcummings. Um, when I mention ethics, I was quite surprised to read an article about Olbridge, and after creating all these commissions, committees, and everything else, I think what Saraval is in dire need of is an ethics commission, and an ethics committee. They appointed non-political people to a committee, and I think of coming to all these council meetings and watching what's going on and everything else, I think we in tire need of ethics, and applying ethics to how we perform and everything else. They had laypeople that were totally non-political, and they had, I think it was clergy, and different departments, and I was quite impressed after reading that article, and I think Saraval could really abide by an ethics commission. My second item is for Mrs. Kilpatrick. You mentioned the last meeting, I'm so happy that we have these meetings now online. When you mentioned that I made it political against Sarah, and that I picked on Mr. Daddio, and I made it political for Mr. Daddio, I stopped and thought, I never mentioned his name, I never mentioned that he was chairman, or that he ran it, or the way he ran Sarah, mine was just after Sarah. I went back and sat and watched every meeting, for the last six meetings, never once did I mention his name. I brought up Sarah, but I never mentioned him, and I resent you saying that I'm making it political, and that I was going after Mr. Daddio, which I didn't, I could care less. Mr. Daddio shot himself in the foot when he said, "I am Miss, I am Sarah, I can have my meeting wherever I want, if I want it in Perth Amboy or whatever." And then he said he didn't have the authority that he comes to you. Sure, what do you do, you rubber stamp it? Never do I see this council really question or scrutinize what's brought before them, and I attend all meetings, and I have a history, and I know.
I serve on Sarah, so while you may not see it here, I do question, I question a lot, I question more than one.
But I never mentioned Mr. Daddio's name, and I never made it political.
I will double-check that, and it may...
Well, you better go back and check, that's one good thing we have, is those meetings,
I am so...
And if they're online, and I checked and watched every single one, and especially, 'cause you made, that, I was making it political, mention his name, never did I mention his name, I never mentioned one member of Sarah.
Sometimes, Mrs. Kilcummings, with all due respect, sometimes your comments are not holding the mic in hand, but you do make it very clear from your seat, and I will also double-check all, as well, and make sure that that's an accurate statement.
Well, you go back and check, and even if I say something from my seat, I do not make it that, and it's as bad as your cohort telling false things about my son, which weren't true too. So I go back and check records before, as political officials, when you make statements. That's why I think we're in dire need of an ethics commission. And another comment, everyone was vocal, I could hear, but you, Mr. DuPont, cannot hear you, your audio on all the meetings, which I'm grateful that our new IT man did put him on, just like the Board of Eds, and, but, could not hear you.
Yeah, I know, I told Mr. Streck that I'll have to speak a little closer, 'cause he mentioned it the last meeting.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, are there any other questions or comments? Being no, uh, other questions or comments, I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
Move the public portion be closed?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Take a motion for adjournment?
Come move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, uh, we'll go to the agenda. Terry, what day did you send that? That email out about?
About the boy that's running tomorrow.
Yeah. I just had it. Yeah. Thank you. You all set? Would everyone please stand for a salute to our flag? Our flag's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. life for a capstone research seminar is running to raise awareness and money for men and women who have served our country. "I recognize that five months isn't a heck of a lot of time to study an issue, but it was more than enough time for me to learn the statistics that are beyond disturbing," he said. "The rate of suicide, unemployment, and homelessness among men and women who served in recent years is appalling. I think it is appalling that these brave men and women are not helped more upon their return to civilian life." Eddie, you're gonna be out there tomorrow. Please come up.
That's Streck 58 Nickel Avenue, Saraville. American Legion Post 211 and VFW Post 4699 will be at his home. So when he comes in, we'll be there to greet him.
I know. I spoke to my chief of staff, Ken Kelly. He's also the liaison to the Veterans Alliance. And as usual, the veterans of Saraville are second to none.
We'll be there, rain or shine.
And we thank you. I did speak with young Brendan's mother tonight and I said, you know, it's supposed to be in Clement weather tomorrow. And she said, he runs rain or shine.
We'll be, yeah, we'll be there, rain or shine.
I know our clerk and Pat Limbo are friends of the parents, but Terry, if you would, this is an extraordinary and exceptional young man. And he deserves our support and our best wishes. So Terry, if you would, about young Brendan, if you want to say a few words?
Well, Mayor, I really don't have really that much to say, other than I know Cliff and Linda O'Brien for a number of years. And I haven't seen Linda and Cliff's son in a number of years, probably since he was maybe, maybe two or three years old, when we used to get together with my children. And his, my son is about the same age as their son. But they did raise a wonderful family and we have to give kudos to his son who chose a wonderful organization and thing to support. And I give him a lot of credit and thank him.
Familiar with Linda and Cliff back from Pop Warner days. Our kids did Pop Warner together. And they're good people, great family, and it's just an incredible job the young man's doing. Okay, if you would, Terry, or would you reach out to the chief, particularly if the weather's in Clement? I think the young man is supposed to hit the Victory Bridge by what time?
Between 2:00 and 2:30.
So I don't want anything happening to him. So if you see if the chief can, can do something to give him some protection from the traffic.
Will do.
So with that, young Brendan O'Brien, the people of Saraville are proud of you and we wish you our best wishes. And upon your completion, we'd like to have you in here and see what you look like in person.
Mayor, may I just say, anybody that wants to make a pledge? Terry, could you read the name again?
I would, I would love to read it.
Anybody wants to make a pledge?
This is called Raise the Flag Run. And donations to support the veterans may be made online to www.donate.trevismannion.org/fundraise-fcid=608309. Or to make it easier, give me a call tomorrow. I'd be more than happy to forward you that email address. My number is 732-390-7025.
Terry, I'm gonna ask you to ask that they put it up on the website.
Absolutely.
And on the, on the cable TV.
Channel 15, K-Blacks.
Okay, so with that, we will go to the first order of business. Jessica?
Are there any, I'm sorry, you don't need to read it again. Is there any discussion
on 325 or 326? Under New Business Committee Reports, Administration of Finance, Councilwoman Novak?
Okay. The following minutes received and filed as printed as 1, 2, 3, 3, and 4 on the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
Okay. Applications for bingo and raffle licenses. There's quite a few. I'm gonna do the same thing again as it appears on the agenda, 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. They're all different raffle and bingo licenses for several organizations in town.
Okay, any objections? Next item.
Request for trash reimbursement received from SCP MacArthur LLC, a 20-unit multifamily property located at 154-172 MacArthur Avenue as required by state law.
Dan, would you explain this?
I know.
I believe it is, Mayor, that they, because they're a multifamily over, I believe it's eight families or?
It's the row housing.
It's the row housing here. We need to, we have to reimburse them for their garbage.
Why don't we just give them garbage cans?
We could look into that, but I prefer, I think it's cleaner, I think it is cleaner if we reimburse them, Mayor. I think what happens is those are transient, those transient residents. And I think to make sure it keeps clean, we, it's probably cleaner we do it this way.
Any objection? Next item.
Okay. Special ruling received from the ABC, allowing for the renewal of Chevry Haas LLC for 2015, 2016.
This is a pocket license, Terry?
This is a pocket license, Mayor, yes.
Any objection? Anything else, Councilwoman?
Just to say that we had a budget meeting this week. The budget will be introduced on the 14th of March. By law, we have to have it by March 11th or the closest meeting to that date. So that'll be March 14th. I'll be meeting with the business administrator and Wayne to get this down a little lower prior to that. So the, the public hearing on it will be April, the first meeting in April, correct?
The 23rd.
The second meeting in April. So I'm just giving you the dates out there so you can plan your schedule and come and ask questions, okay? April 25th. Mayor, other than that progress.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Councilman Grillo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I move the following reports and minutes be received and filed. The construction officials' report, zoning and code enforcement report, fire prevention report, all for the month of January 2016.
Second.
And the Middlesex County Planning Board minutes of January 12, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
Notice to the adjacent properties surrounding municipalities received from Saltwater Tackle Inc. on an application before the zoning board on February 24th, 2016 for a bulk variance to allow the applicant to affix an awning sign and other types of variances. Public notification for the submission of an NJDEP applications for freshwater wetlands and flood hazard area permits for the improvements to Main Street and Crossman Road, and resolutions received from the Middlesex County Planning Board noticing their annual meeting schedule.
Anything else?
Yes, one more item. Request for bond reduction received from Hyview Homes LLC for their project located off of Old Spy Road, which I'll refer to the Borough Engineer.
Okay. Anything else, Councilman?
No, that's all. Progress.
Thank you. Public Safety Councilman Limbo?
Thank you, Mayor. I move the following minutes and reports be received and filed. Board of Health reports for the month of January 2016, Police Chief's report for the month of January 2016, and also the Court Administrator's report for the month of January 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
Also, a public notice that the Board of Health will be conducting their annual free rabies clinics for dogs and cats on May 7th, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. till 12:00 noon. And that'll be at the DPW building here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything else, Councilman?
Also, I'd just like to congratulate and thank Rich Mulligan for completing his second term as chief of our fire department here. He was honored Saturday night at the President's Park Firehouse. We certainly thank Rich for his dedication to Saraville. And I'd also like to recognize the Saraville Fire Department again for helping out at that Hillsborough Fire. We had approximately 10 firefighters working there, helping out. We certainly thank them for their efforts. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. Public Works, Councilwoman Kilpatrick?
I move the following minutes and reports be received and filed. All Public Works Supervisor Reports for the month of January 2016, Public Work Directors Report for the month of January 2016, and the Rent Leveling Board Minutes of February 9th, 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
And notice received from the County Division of Solid Waste Management and a public hearing to be held on February 29th, 2016, at 6:00 p.m. in the County Administrative Building on an amendment to the county's solid waste management plan.
Is there a second? Anything else, Councilwoman?
That's all progress. Thank you.
Thank you. Water and Sewer Environmental, Councilman Rittenhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Minutes and, move the following minutes or reports be received and filed. Water and Sewer Directors 2015 Annual Report and Report for the Month of January 2016.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
And notice received from DEP, seeking public comment on their intent to approve an air pollution control operating permit renewal for EFS Parlin Holdings LLC located at 790 Washington Road. Draft permit can be, can be viewed at the website.
Second.
Is there a second? Anything else, Councilman?
Just real quick. This past weekend, the Sarawak Memorial High School Boys Bowling Team won the Tournament of Champions. They won the Group Four and then all of the groups won through, I guess there's five now. And they won the Tournament of Champions, which means they're overall state champions. I'd like to invite them with the council's approval for our March meeting.
Any objection?
And one of, one of the young men, his father passed away on Christmas Day. The father had always gone to all of the meets and they dedicated that to him. And they came from behind to win the championship.
Ah, great.
Good story.
And other than that, progress.
Thank you. Recreation, Council President?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the Recreation Directors' report for the month of January 2016 be received and filed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Next item.
Letter B. Terry, everything in order with these two coin tosses?
Everything is in order. We already even have the county's approval.
Okay, then I'd like to have them approved.
Any objection? Next item.
Letter C. Saraville Day Committee is requesting permission to conduct the annual Saraville Day on September 18th with a rein date on the 25th. I'd like that get approved.
Any objection? Next item.
Letter D. Applications for special permits, requesting approval pending department approvals for the Olbridge Saraville Rotary as well as the Dorcasish Temple.
Any objection? Next item.
Letter E. I'm gonna combo. The Rec Director applied for and received the New Jersey Trails Grant for 2016, the amount of $24,000. I want to thank Jerry for applying for the grant and also for the state for awarding the grant. It's gonna go for the Conservation Corps in helping, keeping that area up and running. So I just want to thank Jerry and congratulations for getting that grant. Let me just see here. I too wanted to congratulate the bowling team. I saw that in the newspaper. I was very excited. I, my niece bowls and I would go up once in a while and watch the matches and go over and sneak over and see Saraville as well. So I just want to congratulate them. Also, I know a few years back, I'm gonna see if we could, I could work with Dan on this, but a few years back, I guess it was back in the 90s, Mary, they had, we recognized an employee once a month. And I'm hoping that we can go back and do that again, where we can recognize the employee, come in, have the, during Dan's, during his director's meetings, to go over and see who we can recognize. And I'm gonna sit down with Dan, see if, how we can honor employee once a month.
Anything else?
Lastly, we talked about, I don't know how far we can go with regards to the contract, the negotiation.
Yeah, we gotta, yeah.
There was a question regarding the park and ride and the shelter.
No, no, no. The attorney. The attorney.
Oh, the water and the attorney.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there a motion, Dan?
Yeah, I move, I move that we appoint DeCotis as the firm.
Second.
For, for, I'm sorry. Let me, let me get that out. I move that we appoint DeCotis as the firm to negotiate an agreement with DuHernol.
For the purchase of DuHernol?
For the purchase of DuHernol.
From Ashland and DuPont?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do we need a dollar figure in there or?
Well, we can ask them to send a guest in it.
Okay.
But, but. Motion made and seconded. Roll call.
Councilpersons Buchanan?
Yes.
Runs in order that way now.
Grillo?
Yes.
Kilpatrick?
Yes.
Lembo?
Yes.
Novak?
Yes.
Rittenhouse?
Yes.
Anything else, Councilman?
Yeah, I just want, I just want to give Jerry's report real quick. Mommy and Me. Registration for Mommy and Me at the Rec Center and Little Kids Playtime at Kennedy Park is ongoing. You can register online at saravillerec.com or call the Rec Department directly. And the Rec Department is having three different bus trips to Yankee Stadium. They are June 24th versus Minnesota, July 22nd versus San Francisco, and August 26th against Baltimore. The bus leaves, they're all Friday night games. The bus leaves at 4:15 and tickets are $90 each. They're in sections 128 and 129, which is the lower level. Contact Jerry's office if you're interested. Other than that, progress.
Thank you. I am going to appoint Lori Ann Dobrinsky, how do I say that?
Dobrinsky.
Dobrinsky to be the superintendent's designate on the library board for one year. Do I need any affirmation for that?
Yes, the motion's second.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry, who moved that? Our kids. Oh, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And with that, we'll go to the Business Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Request for authorization to extend a contract with Atlantic Waste Systems for the purchase of tile parts for a final two-year term.
Second.
I also have a request that's not on your agenda, but from actually South Amboy. Their fire department, there was an accident of one of their fire engines. They are asking to borrow our fire engine eight, which we have, are not being used at the present time for approximately three or four weeks. I wanted to make sure council was okay with this. We would be able to get a certificate of insurance to make sure they were covered. And is the chief there? I think the chief is.
Would you gonna, would you talk with the BA after the meeting about this?
They've already asked, they've asked me. I'm asking you as council, would you approve that?
Oh, you've already discussed it?
Yes.
This is pre-discussed?
It's pre-discussed.
All right. Any objection?
Nope.
You guys are in favor of this?
Yeah.
Okay. Any objection?
No.
Okay.
And then I would, just to give you an update, I get a report from our IT Director, Tom Bracken, every month. I just want to relay a couple things here. Number one, it's security cameras and the police. They're installed viewing stations in dispatch last week. They customized views of various operational situations, such as the prisoner intake, court monitoring, et cetera. They've identified three to four cameras that are having a little bit of issues, but the vendor's working on it to resolve it and should be resolved this week. Security cameras for the senior center, the cameras are all installed. The vendor went through the operation with Jen. Jen knows how to operate everything and they are in operation. Also, in-car police cameras were installed, cabling for police in-car cameras from February 10th through February 13th. We completed the install of the server and software configuration February 16th and 17th. We verified operation of new in-car camera systems in three vehicles. And this system eventually will be installed throughout the patrol fleet of the police. And last but not least, a topic here that everyone's dear to their heart, the meeting video update. We instructed the Secretary of Zoning and Sarah Meetings on operation of the cameras. We were able to offload most of the two hours of the video we had for the budget meeting and published to the TV station to air this Saturday. We had an issue with the last tape that was used. We'll add it to a budget video once it's resolved. We sent the clerk, proposed TV schedule to begin in March to include Sarah and zoning meetings. And Tom had the company that we use for the court to evaluate 308 and 310 in order to provide a state contract quote, which should be in hand.
Any objection? Okay.
And then I would, just to give you an update, I get a report from our IT Director, Tom Bracken, every month. I just want to relay a couple things here. Number one is security cameras and the police. They're installed, viewing stations and dispatch last week. They customized the views of various operational situations, such as the prisoner intake, court monitoring, et cetera. They've identified three to four cameras that are having a little bit of issues, but the vendor's working on it to resolve it and should be resolved this week. Security cameras for the senior center, the cameras are all installed. The vendor went through the operation with Jen. Jen knows how to operate everything, and they are in operation. Also, in-car police cameras were installed, cabling for police in-car cameras from February 10th through February 13th. We completed the install of the server and software configuration February 16th and 17th. We verified operation of new in-car camera systems in three vehicles, and the system eventually will be installed throughout the patrol fleet of the police. And last but not least, a topic here that everyone's dear to their heart, the meeting video update. We instructed the Secretary of Zoning and Sarah Meetings on operation of the cameras. We were able to offload most of the two hours of the video we had for the budget meeting and publish to the TV station to air this Saturday. We had an issue with the last tape that was used. We'll add it to a budget video once it's resolved. We sent the clerk, proposed TV schedule to begin in March to include Sarah and zoning meetings, and Tom had the company that we use for the court to evaluate 308 and 310 in order to provide a state contract quote, which should be in hand by the end of this week. And that's his report, Mayor.
Okay. And CFO's report?
Sure. And your packet is also transfer resolutions. We also have a scheduled budget workshop meeting, which we scheduled for, do we need to, I should ask the liaison, do we need to schedule a?
I think after, we meet on Monday, the 29th, correct?
Correct.
Where, you know, I'll get to Terry about if we need to schedule a meeting then. I want to get something to talk about before I schedule a meeting.
And then, as we said previous, Mayor, we said that we'd be introducing the budget at the March 14th meeting by New Jersey State statute.
Anything else, Dan?
That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Attorney's Report?
Yeah, only I want to report back. Councilwoman Novak had asked about the Bus Shelter Station shelters and whether we could terminate the contract. We can terminate, subject to a 30-day's notice and setting forth the default, since they haven't done anything. So I just need authorization from Mayor Council to allow me to send that letter.
Is there any objection?
No, I can't wait.
Okay.